Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham County School Board meeting for October 11th, 2021. Thank you for your patience. We just needed to work out a couple of technical difficulties for those that are watching us from computers at home. We're going to call the meeting to order. The first item in the agenda is to approve the agenda, so I need a motion for approval, please.
A motion.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion regarding the agenda, board members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Move on to public comments. We do have citizens who have signed up to speak this evening. The first one is Caleb Kurig.
Dear members of the Rockingham County School Board, my name is Caleb Kurig and I'm a freshman at Broadway High School, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. For the past years, I've been advocating for a cause that is very important to me, and that is students on the school board. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary definition of democracy is a government in which the supreme power is vested in the people and exercised by them directly or indirectly through a system of representation, usually involving periodically held free elections. When it comes to school, this means the people are students and teachers. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but of every member on this board, none of them are elected by the students. When the school board makes a decision, that decision doesn't affect a voter in Elkton or a voter in Broadway. That decision affects the students and teachers of Rockingham County, so why not give them a say? While the Virginia Code does not allow for students to vote as members, it does allow them to serve in an advisory role. Section 22.1-86.1 of the Virginia Code states, "The local school board may adopt procedures for the appointment of student representatives from among the students enrolled in the public schools and divisions. The student representative shall serve in a non-voting advisory capacity and shall be appointed under such circumstances and serve for such terms as the board prescribes." Fun fact, Fairfax County has a non-voting student member on their school board, and they have shown it works. During times such as these, it's important to give students a voice, especially with issues such as bathroom policies, mask mandates, and reforming the dress code. As I somewhat stated earlier, Rockingham County's education affects no one except the students of Rockingham County. We, the students of Rockingham County, deserve a say in our education as it determines our future. Parents across Rockingham County are running for school boards so they can change our education. It should be students who are changing our education, and we can do it. Everyone deserves a voice, and students deserve representation on this school board. I would love the opportunity to speak with every member about this and address any concerns or questions that we have. Thank you, and please, when you make a decision, think about what the students want.
Thank you, Caleb. Our next speaker is Kathy Comer.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come before you tonight. There are three papers before you. I would like to take the opportunity to dispel some myths. One is that government does not control the education of our children. All right? Before you is this race-sex-based op-ed form. It is based on a Virginia law. The Code Law is 12401, Rights of Parents Status. Now, this was generated by a man, Mr. Paul Lott, who is president of the National Society for the Advancement of Black Americans. He and this organization hate discrimination of any of its many forms. So they decided to generate this form, and the 14 ideas listed on this form are taken from the ideas in Critical Race Theory. In the law, quote, "A parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child." This provision in Virginia law was passed in 2013, not so long ago, to bring Virginia in statutory compliance by the Supreme Court rulings affirming the rights of parents to determine the education of their children. Another myth, I think, is that the Virginia Department of Education cannot mandate that you, the school board, or you, the superintendent, do anything. They can lobby, you can recommend, and that type of thing. They cannot mandate that you do anything. Okay? So this, they generated this op-ed form. It's similar to the other op-ed forms like for sex ed or physical education and that type of thing that schools have. So a parent, if they take this form, they sign the child's name and their name as a parent, and give it to the principal, he is legally bound to opt out their child from these ideas based on Critical Race Theory. Mr. Lott of the National Society for the Advancement of Black Americans. Excuse me, I didn't turn it off. He stated, Mr. Lott, that if the school doesn't comply with the form, there's a basis for a legal case. Any Virginian who completes the form needs to contact the NSABA if there are violations to this form. He went on further to state, "In whatever district, we need to bring a lawsuit. We are going to bring a lawsuit." He didn't say, "We can, we might, there may be." He stated, "We are going to bring a lawsuit." He is a man who says what he believes, and he means what he says. It is also not the role of the government to push any particular ideology in schools. In schools, the teachers are to teach. They're to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. Anything else is merely a distraction to that teaching. Now, this form is based on the Supreme Court case in Virginia, and because of that case, our legislature in Virginia passed this law, this Code of Virginia law, that states that parents have the right to determine the curriculum. Now, Mr. Lott and the National Society for the Advancement of Black Americans hate discrimination. They really hate discrimination. These ideas, you read them, are all discriminatory, every one. So that is where he's coming from. Okay. I brought you this literature from the Powhatan District of Virginia, and it's very good reading. You'll find it very informative. They went through some things. They made some very wise decisions. So I brought that for you to read. Another thing that you have is the effects of one-party control in Virginia. Now, these are the laws that our legislature passed when they ended their legislative session recently. All right? If you'll scroll down, I've marked it, "To School Safety," it reads. Bill HV257 eliminated the requirement that Virginia schools report certain misdemeanor crimes to law enforcement, including sexual assault, stalking, threats to kill teachers or school employees. And if you Google it, you can see the debate on this bill. Okay? Now, if I were a teacher and I couldn't report a child or a parent threatening me to the local authorities, I would worry. Okay? So that is what I came to tell you. I also want you to know that I don't want a lawsuit in our district. It is bad for the schools. It is bad for the county, and it creates all kinds of division. I think that we should have unity in this school division. I'm hoping you will promote that and take the considerations of the parents in this room and throughout the school district at heart. I personally will deliver these to every school in Rockingham County. Sorry about that. So that if a parent wanted this form, all they had to do was go inside the school, ask the secretary for the form, she would give it to them, and they could sign it. I also want you all to know, I know Mr. Breeden knows, my husband served on this school board for eight years. He went through some things in his term of service, but his main concern was for the children schooling. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Comer. Ms. Comer, could you do me a favor? Could you give Ms. Bocock, the clerk of the board, one of those packets also, so she has it with her information? Our next speaker is Mark Flanders.
Thank you. I am Mark Flanders. I'm a resident of Bridgewater. Couple things on my mind this evening that I wanted to speak about. First is the Learning 2025 Initiative. I read the press release about that, and probably like many parents in Rockingham County, kind of my ears went up and I thought, uh-oh. And Dr. Scheichel addressed, I listened to your presentation, and he addressed some of my concerns about what equity and inclusion means. I loved what you said about what that means and how it means that, you know, poor students aren't treated differently than well-off students, and that kids in ag get the same resources that kids that are college-bound. All great things. Unfortunately, my guess is that the AASA, and certainly Harvard, would not have that same definition of equity and inclusion. And so the hairs on the back of my neck really stood up when you said Harvard was going to be consulting with you on initiatives around mental health of our students. This is an organization that is so woke that they've recently hired an atheist to be their chaplain, right? This is an organization that if somebody from Harvard offered free help or offered to pay me to help with the mental health of my child, I would run away. My point here is this, I know you're not going to change this initiative just because I'm speaking here tonight. My point is, as a parent, I'm going to be watching this very closely, because that's an organization. I'm not happy with them doing anything in our school. I think it's only going to create problems. I would urge you, as a board, to be very transparent about everything around this initiative and not give parents one more reason to be screaming mad. We already have plenty, okay? So that's just my plea and my urge. Be super transparent. We're going to be watching this, okay? And next, I may be wasting my breath, but I'm going to come back to masks. As far as I can tell, from my research, there's no evidence that mask mandates in schools really do anything. There are plenty of states where schools are unmasked, kids are not dying of COVID in droves, or it would be all over CNN. It's not happening. There's actually no evidence that COVID really presents a statistically significant risk to children. To older people, yes; to children, absolutely not. And in fact, many countries have begun to pause vaccine rollouts to people under 30 because the risk from the vaccine seems to outweigh the benefit. So I know that you're going to say that we're being told what to do by the governor and we don't have a choice here. Well, all I can tell you is that in many of the states where the governor said mask mandates couldn't be in place, school boards stood up and went against them and put in place their own mask mandates. All I'm asking is, why don't we have some courage in Rockingham County, recognize that these mask mandates are not good for our children? And in fact, the AAP has clearly said that mask mandates have significant, and Dr. Scheichel has admitted many times, that they have significant detrimental consequences to children, these mask mandates. So why don't we have the courage in Rockingham County and stand up and say, "We're going to give parents the choice to opt out. We're going to give parents the chance to actually be the parent for their kids and decide what is a good risk for their kid, and we're going to let them opt out and consequences be damned. They've done it in other places, why can't we do it here?" Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanders. That concludes the public comments speakers for this evening. We'll move to the next part of our board meeting, which is board member comments and highlights by board members. Dr. McCulkin?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. It has been my pleasure to attend the 12th Annual Central Office Student Artwork Exhibition that was held on Tuesday, September 28th. There were over 200 works of art in the central office, and it was wonderful to see all the artwork that the students have done. I remarked to Beth Harder, who is responsible for the, she's a supervisor for art in our division, and I told her that each year, the artwork just keeps getting better and better, and it was a pleasure to see our students' work.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Dr. McCulkin. Mr. Falk? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Lohr?
Thank you. I have a couple of student highlights. First of all, the State Fair of Virginia completed last weekend, and just want to give a congratulations to all the students who participated. Rockingham County Public Schools, we should be very proud of our students. They did great. And MTC, the awards that were won are too numerous to mention here, but MTC did a great job of showing and taking pictures and putting things on their website, so please, please, please visit the MTC website, if for nothing else, to see the awesome fantasy makeup that they did and participated in. It's pretty cool. And in some cases, you know, kids won grand champion, Hampshire U, and that's awesome. But in some cases, you know, kids won sixth-place market goat, and that was a great accomplishment for them. So we're super proud of everybody who participated. Also, and unfortunately, a highlight for the students, a sad thing for me because I was not able to attend, but I had a parent send me some information. The Shenandoah Valley Marching Band Invitational is an annual marching band competition that showcases bands from around the state. All Rockingham County Public School high schools were in attendance, and TA and Broadway placed first and second in their class. I'm not sure if somebody would like to tell me? I'd love to talk about it next time. I'm not sure how East Rock and Spotswood did, but TA and Broadway placed first and second in their class, and Broadway had the fourth-highest score at the event. TA, East Rock, now, the good news, the highlight for all of us, TA, East Rock, and Broadway will be participating in the Parade of Champions at JMU this Saturday around lunchtime. So hopefully, we can all make time to attend, because I think it's going to be a really awesome event. And I wish those three schools best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Breeden? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scheichel?
Couple of items. First, Caleb, thank you for bringing this up. I know we had some email exchanges, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, because we will have, what I had said previously is if we have one student, it's really difficult to represent a broad view, and we're actually starting a student advisory this year, so that's actually going to be part of the process for some of our changes that we're proposing. So students will be part of that. So, and actually, I will say, right, that comes straight from Caleb over the years emailing me and saying, hey, you know, let's include students more, and so, thank you, because it's led to that, right? So we discussed whether that should be, you know, one student at the board, and I always said, you know, then you get to really listen to the stuff that's not the most interesting most of the days, and then when it gets really interesting, you won't have a vote, really. So I think the student advisory is a better route, and that's what we're doing. As for Harvard, I just want to say that we're participating with Harvard in middle school math instruction. Learning 2025 is not a Harvard project, so just to make that clear, that's two separate things. And so Harvard's working with us on improving middle school math instruction so that it leads to good outcomes for all students. So it's, you know, it's not the Learning 2025 Initiative, just to clarify that. There are other events in terms of the marching band on Saturday, if you're interested. Spotswood actually is scheduled to perform at 8:50, and then Broadway, TA, and East Rock between 11:30 and 1:30. So that'll be, yeah, they're way early on this one, and so the other three are all around, within a two-hour timeframe. We also had today a recognition for teachers of economics, so the Center for Economic Education from JMU had its award session today, and they're part, through the YES program, Your Economic Success. And so that's for local educators, both Harrisonburg and Rockingham, and it was really neat to see the hands-on activities that teachers had developed. And the best evidence on how good they are is that the top three spots in the state competition were all claimed by local teachers. So one group from, at a city, and two from the county, and then at the national level, Lauren Shiflett, who taught at Elkton when she won the award and is now at South River, won the national award for a top economics educator in the country. So now, good things happening there. And then finally, the VSBA, Virginia School Boards Association, awards, the Academy Awards to board members based on their participation from July 1 to June 30 each academic year. And this year, Ms. Reed, Ms. Lohr, received a certificate of recognition, and Dr. McCulkin received a certificate of honor and a gold VSBA pin to be delivered. I believe the certificates are in your folders, and the pin is to be delivered to Dr. McCulkin when we receive it. So congratulations to the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Caleb, can you do me a great big favor? Can you walk to that microphone and hit that button again? And it'll help the people at home. Great, thanks so much. Dr. Scheichel actually brought up what I was going to bring up, Caleb. He's been in, he and I have been in conversation sometime about advisory, and he's made some changes in working with his executive administrative staff, and so it's nice that you came here because it really dovetailed into us, him being able to share that information as we get through those plans. We've been sidetracked by a number of issues, but the intent has been there. And it's nice to put a face with a name, you sending us the emails. And I have to tell you, remind me of another student that we had some time ago, Mr. Breeden, and Mr. Falk may remember Josh Calderon, who came here and advocated to us, oh, probably six years ago, about parking at Spotswood, and had a conversation, would come down here and speak and share information with us, and got a couple of students together. I think we went and met with those students even, and as a result of that, we made some changes to the parking fees. So keep doing what you're doing, and we appreciate it. Many thanks to Ms. Comer and Mr. Flanders for sharing the feedback and information with us. We appreciate that. And so we'll move on to our action items for this evening. First is the minutes, board members. You have the minutes for September 27th. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the minutes from September 27th's regular board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. McCulkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion on those minutes, board members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. You have the bills regarding the September, for September 2021 presented?
I recommend approval of the bills as presented for September 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the 2021, September 2021 bills. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McCulkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, five zero. Dr. Scheichel, field trips.
You have three field trips for approval tonight. They all involve the FFA convention in Indianapolis. These are from Turner Ashby High School, three students from East Rock, one student, and from MTC, four students. You've previously approved Broadway and Spotswood, and so these are all students that will attend the convention in Indianapolis. We've had to change the travel arrangements a little bit. The company that usually provides the charter bus isn't able to do so. These are normally organized by the state FFA, and again, there is a shortage of charter bus drivers, not only school bus drivers, and so Eric Fitzgerald and the advisors, you know, got to work pretty quickly and found a number of different options that families can take advantage of. So there are flights out of Weir's Cave, or Charlottesville, or Richmond, and there's also a train connection from Stanton, and so families still have a chance to travel to Indy for a cost that's similar to what the bus transportation would have been, and I recommend approval of those field trips as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the three field trips. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion, board members?
I just want to thank everybody who's worked so hard to get these kids able to travel. I know from firsthand experience that it has been quite the rollercoaster. I know from firsthand experience that it has been quite the roller coaster. So thank you to everyone who's made this trip possible.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any other questions or discussion, boards members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion approved. We'll move to information items. Innovation update, Dr. Scheichel.
I know it's been a quick meeting, and everyone's worried now. Because it's pretty usual, how long is it going to take them? Glad Caleb's still here, so he knows I'm not, you know, I wasn't just making this up about the student advisory. I'll mention something about that actually in the presentation. And it's listed there, so again, always appreciate it. And just students also coming to the podium. If you remember, again, last year, we had a basketball season with masks because of a student coming and speaking along with physicians about how to do that in a safe way. Tonight, I just want to outline, you know, what we're working on when it comes to possible changes in the school division. These are five topics that we've talked about repeatedly, right? How are we going to handle growth? What are we going to do about transportation in terms of bus driver shortage and how kids get to school? An increase in project-based learning that really addresses the needs of many kids in the ways that I outlined, and I appreciate your comments on that. And it is how we look at equity, right? And so that's important. We've always said, you know, we are not here to be Fairfax. We're not here to be Albemarle. We want to be the best Rockingham we can be. So we learn from others. But we're doing many things our own way and focus on the needs of our community. Just again, like we've talked before about kids in Ag. And the convention in Indianapolis is, you know, one of the great examples. It's our first overnight field trip away from Virginia in a long time. And so it's just fitting that Ag is the reason. And when we talk about project-based learning, again, what that requires is a change in how we think about classrooms, in terms of fusion classes, in terms of teachers learning how to create learning opportunities that go across the curriculum, across subject areas that are meaningful for students and that we get to that application of knowledge. It's really important to have solid content knowledge. And so, you know, when we talk about the projects in history, it's really important to understand, obviously, you know, the historical documents, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, all these things. That doesn't mean we devalue those. It simply means that in addition to learning about things, it is also then important to apply that knowledge and to learn from history and apply it to the current situation. Because that's obviously a part of the idea, is to make sure we learn from things that have happened before. And again, to keep working towards that ideal of a society, you know, that's really outlined in those documents, you know, as an aspiration of what the country can be and needs to be. And so in order to accomplish that, you know, we've previously talked about different options for freeing up time for teachers to collaborate. And maybe even, you know, we talked about shortening the school day previously. But what we're talking about more now is how can we free up time while students are in the building? So that, you know, students can still get their services all day while teachers have some time to collaborate while students are in the building and even practice those things. So if we have a class going on in one part of the building and teachers are collaborating around a project, they could set that up, that for one time, they can actually try the sad, you know, with the teacher in the classroom as a collaboration. And so it gives us all kinds of options. And then, as always, you know, mental behavioral health, our social emotional learning needs for students that are ever increasing. And so I'll just briefly go over those five, you know, growth on the east side, really a major topic still, you know, what will happen long term. We've talked about, you know, what it takes to have four districts that are well-aligned so that the capacity we have in the elementary schools is sufficient to fill the middle school, and that's sufficient to fill the high school. And two of our attendance areas, the TA attendance area and the Spotswood attendance area, are well-aligned. And on the east side, East Rock is bigger than what Elkton Middle can fill up. And on the north end at Broadway, Broadway was built at the time not to be filled by students that would come out of a full J. Frank Hilliard, but for what the needs were at the time. And so, for example, a Broadway expansion has been discussed for a long time. And so those would basically create good alignment. So those are things that we're looking at. Not as we previously talked about, there are multiple scenarios that are possible in terms of creating that alignment and how to account for future growth. That's again, all going to happen close to the city on the, not all, but, you know, the main growth will be close to the city on the east side. And so we've looked through some of those scenarios. We're still looking at the details, and we hope to have an update to the board in November on that topic. Transportation, bus driver shortage. You know from the news that this is a national issue. In some states, governors have mobilized the National Guard to drive students to school. So that's not quite the case here yet, but this is a national issue. And again, charter companies. So it's not just schools that have this issue. Staffing issues are across the economy right now. But for us, you know, bus driver shortages have been a picture for a while. And again, in all school districts, and everyone handles it a little bit differently. We had previously, you know, discussed options of, you know, increasing our ability to do more double runs so that bus drivers take the students to school and then pick up another group in areas that are close by. So that would be one option. We've talked about adjusted bus driver contracts. So the bus drivers could drive more hours in the day and then take care of some other business in between, which might attract drivers that are really only interested if they can really be full-time employees. And then, you know, some school divisions, and we did this last year simply because of the distancing requirements on buses, are increasing, you know, their requests for parents to transport students. But if you remember all the presentations that Alvin Eastep's done in the past and that Jeremy's done recently, you know, the, you do have a safety impact. But to bus, school buses, you're 10 times safer than in any other mode of transportation. So that's not really a direction that, you know, is a long-term solution. But again, in crunch times like last year where we couldn't transport the students as much, you know, those are things that we talked about. Project-based learning. So in order for that to work, teachers need protected time. And we have to be very careful to not just say, well, here's time, use it wisely, right? So the idea would be, and we talked about this last year and the year before, time that is purposeful. And, you know, these professional learning communities where teachers can collaborate, they can collaborate with experts in the field to develop activities that again, apply that knowledge and lead to deeper understanding of the content that they learn. And as part of that, of course, that creates meaning out of that content. And that means you remember it, too, and you know what to do with it. And you know what to do with it in other content areas. And so that's always important to remember. So when we're looking at time, you know, at the middle schools, teachers have, you know, their blocks every day with the substitute shortage. Many teachers, you know, help out substituting in other classrooms. So that's just, we have to address that to free up that time. It's also possible at the high schools. Historically, there's always been a planning period and a duty period. There are options to free teachers from the duty period and create that time. But it's going to be most difficult at the elementary level, right? Because there isn't that long planning block. Because we have requirements in terms of how much core instructional time has to happen. And so we're just talking about a number of different options. We had a really good meeting with administrators last week. And just some ideas of, you know, we have arts, we have music, we have PE as the specials. Can we increase the amount of time that students, for example, spend in arts, spend in music? And that frees up, of course, the core teacher's time. And so that would require some staffing in those areas. Is it possible to create a new special? So this idea of STEAM, and not just science, technology, engineering, and math, but art in there as well. And so now you're covering a lot of core content areas. And so that's part of what we want to discuss. And, you know, recess, you know, the recess counts as instructional times if it's structured a certain way. You know, can that free up time for teachers to collaborate with some creative scheduling? We are currently already using teacher assistants to help teachers with their letters programs, or the new reading program that we've implemented, and that's going to be ongoing in Rockingham County. And so teacher assistants have played an increasing role for some of the activities that students can be part of with a teacher assistant in the room. And then again, a number of other ideas at the middle and high schools. You know, everyone's trying to be creative with how we can really have meaningful learning going on. But at the same time, also free up teachers to collaborate with their colleagues. Mental behavioral health, you know, the tiered systems of support project. That's, that is what really was recognized by Learning 2025 as outstanding as a model, really as a national model. We have some social emotional learning projects ongoing. So one would be Sources of Strength, a really good project at Broadway that other schools are looking at, conscious discipline. Again, looking at discipline, that's just from a punitive measure, but looking at discipline from a way that we understand why students misbehave and address the underlying issues rather than to just try to punish people into compliance. Restorative practices, similar idea. Again, many of our elementary schools have restore, have their morning circles and also use these methods. And so we'll continue on that path. But again, it's important to get feedback and to really plan that out. As part of this, I just want to remind everyone, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. And Unity Day is on Wednesday, October 20th. So wear orange on that day. Just tried to get started early with my orange tie. What are the next steps? So there it is. Teacher advisory, that's been in place. Certainly, teachers will play a major part in the feedback loop, as will students. So student advisory. We've had parent advisories where we've really talked about, you know, different ways of having school, the different models when it comes to learning. And we're also adding a more formal community advisory. We had a community a day a few years back where lots of community leaders came to one of our schools and we worked with them, you know, through some of the ideas that we had and got great feedback. And so we're creating a more permanent structure there with multiple meetings a year and a community advisory. And then again, what the plan is, is at this point, you know, we're just basically going through different ideas. They all have to be filtered through what's possible in a daily schedule, what we can do in terms of what the legal requirements are, in terms of instructional hours. And then hopefully by December, provide an update to the board. And then again, have additional conversations around what the, what that roadmap to a learning environment where students have more hands-on opportunities might look like. And that's it, believe it or not. Any questions?
Board members, questions for Dr. Scheichel, comments? Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Dr. Aldifer.
Chair Reid, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel. After a few months hiatus, we're back with some policies for you to review. I am going to talk briefly about a number of them tonight because they, there are some clarifications and some explanations I want to be sure that I share with you about where we came from in putting these together. The first policy is policy GAA staff time schedules. One of the changes you'll see there is a change from seven hours of a minimum workday to seven and a half hours. This is really consistent with what our practice has been, the seven and a half hours. And it's also consistent with what other school divisions in this region are expecting from employees. So this really isn't a dramatic change for our employees. It's really, in practice, just reflecting in policy what's really been happening now for a number of years.
Can you repeat that, Dr. Aldifer? Mr., I heard last week immediately, once these were published, Rockingham will increase the teacher workday by 30 minutes. So can you just say it one more time?
Yes. This is only consistent with what we're doing right now. So we don't expect any change in what's happening in classrooms or in schools from administrators about the expectations about teachers, the length of their workday. It is simply reflecting in policy to be consistent with what we've been doing in practice. So this doesn't change what we've doing, or we're doing. This aligns with what we're doing. So teacher workdays aren't going to be any different. The length of a teacher's day isn't any different. It's just aligned with that. The second policy that I'll highlight is the holidays policy, GCBD eight. And it's the addition of Juneteenth as a holiday for 12-month employees. So wanted to bring that to your attention. Next is policy JBA, which is Section 504 Nondiscrimination Policy and Complaint Procedures. And this, the change here is it identifies Scott Hand or Director of People Personnel Services as the compliance officer in relation to 504 compliance. It had been the Chief Human Resources Officer, but these are typically almost exclusively situations involving students. And we felt that it was more appropriate for Scott Hand to be in that role. The next two policies regarding tobacco products and nicotine vapor products and student dress code. We are adjusting some of the consequences or possible consequences to provide some additional flexibility to our administrators, moving away from these absolute kind of zero tolerance automatic suspensions to providing a range of options, including some in-school or some, which are newly established base programs, which are more kind of behavior modification types of things as opposed to simply being out-of-school suspension. So you'll see in the sections where it talks about consequences, some of the wording is consistent. This was an initiative that was led by Becky Hill Schifflett, had meetings with all of our administrators to talk about these options and really did kind of a workshop setup, working with them, talking it through, making adjustments. So they're on board with this and feel good about this change as well. There are two policies that are, we are moving, essentially deleting the RCPS VSBA policy and then introducing a totally new policy. And again, these are to be aligned with the VSBA. As we've talked about before, as we've been updating our policy manual, it is helpful when they're very similar to go ahead with the VSBA policy. It helps with updates and those types of things. And the last one, which may seem odd for us to have the student conduct on school buses, to remove that policy. The reason why that's being removed, it's actually in our policy manual in two different locations. So it was located here in the E section. And it's also, in my view, more appropriately in the student section. So the JFCC is an exact replica of this policy. So we decided to remove this one, but it's still in our policy manual, just under the student section. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about these policies. And obviously, I'll take questions at other times, too, if you have them as the review.
Board members, do you have any questions? I have one for you, Dr. Aldifer. The GDN, the change in that, is there administrative, maybe Ms. Judd knows this, administrative content that's a little bit more clear than this? It just says is regular, is evaluated on a regular basis?
Yeah, we evaluate all of our employees yearly. I can't tell you right now which policy that's reflected in, but we do have an expectation to all of, all employees classified. And exempt and non-exempt are all evaluated on a yearly basis.
Okay, all right. Yeah, like the addition of these primary purposes of evaluation assistance, I think that it clarifies for our staff what our expectations are of them also. It's much better than the old wording. So I just wanted to be see. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, board members, in your packets. You have a financial review for September 2021 that you can review as needed. And we'll move into other business. School board questions and comments? We'll start with Mr. Breeden.
I was afraid you were going to do that. Speaker said a little while ago that what I say may not make a difference, and I'm paraphrasing your sentiments. But I feel much the same way in what I'm about to say, that it probably won't make any difference. But here goes. I find myself like the comedian Ron White when he said, I have the right to remain silent, it's not the ability. And so, you know, I've spent my entire life And so, you know, I've spent my entire life on the east side of Rockingham County. My generations before me have been there, the Breeden's and the Comer's. Been there a long time, haven't they? We work in the community, we worship in the community, we shop in the community. And I find myself so many times, whether it's at my place of work or in the hardware store or the parts store or the grocery store or whatever, talking with people about the issues that confront Rockingham County schools. I can't tell you the number of times that my wife hasn't just taken the grocery cart and went on and said, catch up with me at the car, right? I have a difficult time nowadays, and this is a rhetorical question, Madam Chairman. I have a difficult time these days understanding what happens, what changes from the Dan that people talk to in those settings and the Dan that people see when I'm behind this podium. Because I come to school board meetings now and I'm told that we're not transparent, that we don't, we don't share information, we're hiding things, we're in times, you know, my wife's quit watching because, you know, there's times that people have stood up and yelled, you're liars. And I got to tell you, it's hard to come to these meetings now. And I hope that, that whatever's, whatever switch is being clicked between the conversations I have with people one-on-one and the way this board is viewed, once we're collectively here, I just hope that somehow we can, that we can heal that process and to, and to understand that, you know, we got kids, grandkids in the schools too. Now, we may not always agree, and that's okay. But, you know, I came on this board 20 some years ago thinking I could change the world. As I near the end of it, I'm trying to not let the world change me. So if I look a little frustrated or tired or forlorn sometimes, it's because it is becoming harder. And I submit to you that the end result of all of this is going to be is that we're going to have hard time finding people who are willing to give up the time necessary to serve the kids of Rockingham County and do these jobs, just like we're having trouble finding bus drivers. Now, there's always going to be people who want to have a political day in the sun. But that's over quickly. And then the real work starts. So my plea to you is, and I'm speaking to the community at large, is we can still talk, we can still have dialogue, we can still disagree agreeably. But I really think we've, we got to tone down the rhetoric. And I'm sorry for going on about this, but I, a good friend of mine went to the Charlotte races with me this weekend. And he and I don't agree on anything politically, okay? But he, he said to me, he said, I got a couple of questions about the school board and I just thought I'd wait till we were together so I could ask. And we talked them through. And that's the way it should be. That's the way it should be. And I hope we can get back to that. We're trying our best. And so I'm sorry, I'm sorry for rambling. It's just one of those things that I feel compelled at this stage of my career to try to, to try to get us back to that level of not 100% agreement, but at least 100%, 100% of respect for one another. I tell my wife sometimes, she says, well, you need to practice what you preach. And I tell her, I don't have a quick temper, I just have a quick reaction to BS. And so sometimes, sometimes that, that happens too. So thank you all for allowing me to soapbox there and take up your time.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Ms. Lohr?
Thank you. I don't normally do this, but I think I just can't, I can't not tonight. Caleb said something in his remarks that really struck me. And it was something along the lines like, our decisions only impact you with your education. And I so appreciate you coming tonight. And it takes a lot of courage to get up there and talk. And I really appreciate that. But your education impacts every single one of us. 4H did an amazing commercial a couple of years ago about how, and they focused on different kids and how you're going to need me, you're going to need me. We're going to need you, Caleb, to figure out diabetes. We're going to need you to figure out cancer. We're going to need you to fix our cars. The education our children receive impacts every single one of us. And I just could not let the room leave tonight without expressing that thought. Caleb's education and the lady sitting next to him, they're our future. And they are why we are all here. And they, they're the ones that are going to save us and take care of us and, and be our future. So thank you for coming tonight and thank you for expressing your views. And I'm so excited that we, that you're being successful and that we're going to have student advisory. That's awesome. So thank you. Now to turn to our superintendent, because I do have a question. Linville Edom Elementary School, where are we at with the septic and, and all of that?
Yeah, as you know, we had to work through a number of different issues. And the only update I can give you right now is that because the new system that would be possible at Linville Edom is a clean discharge system that still needs some land. So there are negotiations with the land owner to acquire our ability to discharge because the direct discharge into the stream, that's not possible or at least not feasible based on other, you know, type of nitrate credits and the unpredictability of those. So if we want to keep that school open, the better solution is to have access to adjacent land. And so the negotiations there are going very well. But again, because they're ongoing negotiations, I don't want to say too much. But I would say that at this point, we certainly, I hope that that's on the wraps in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Falk? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. McCoken?
Pass.
Thank you, Dr. McCoken. Dr. Schikele?
Pass.
Thank you. I think I'm going to pass also this evening, other than to thank all of you for being here and sharing your thoughts and feedback with us and spending time with us this evening. Please be safe going home. It's getting dark a lot earlier. It's kind of also hard getting up in the morning in the dark too. So, and be mindful of our children who may be out there in the dark, either in the morning or later in the afternoon catching the bus or going off to sporting events or whatever. We appreciate that. So thank you for being here. We have reason to go into closed meeting now. So board members, I need a motion to enter closed meeting.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Personnel, specific public officers, appointees or employees for the purpose of considering such individual's assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary or resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion board members? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Thank you.